Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Farmington Board of Education for Monday, October 21, 2024. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I ask you all to stand. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of September 16, 2024, BOE regular meeting?
Motion? Second?
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? I abstain. Next item on our agenda is a consideration of superintendent's report.
Okay, so we have our next presentation is from the Farmington Public School Foundation. And as you know, we have an outstanding education foundation here in Farmington, all made up of parents who care so much, and they provide both large-scale innovation grants, like our Edge Media Lab, if you've ever been up in our Edge Media Lab or our Engineering Lab. And the foundation also provides annual teacher-initiated grants that represent the seeds of innovation aligned to our vision of the global citizen. And this is something that really honors our teachers and their agency and expertise. So I'm going to just give a few examples of some teacher-initiated grants for this year. One is at West District Elementary School, and it's called Tiger Treat Snack Cart, where students are really learning life skills in the snack cart. And then we also have another grant at West District, that's the Math Through Play. Noah Wallace: Gamifying Math and Literacy at Noah Wallace. IAR has Saving the Salmon. They're actually going to go out into, you know, to the Farmington River and have a very hands-on Integrated Unit experience, thanks to our foundation. And at Farmington High School, all of you have benefited from this, but they did a very large grant for transition programming for our Hawks Nest Espresso Coffee Shop. So those are some examples of what our foundation does, and we have a bit of a transition going on with our foundation. So it's really my pleasure to introduce Kelly Spring and Carla Simone as the new co-chairs of the foundation. Tony is here, Tony Shaq Lee, our previous leader of the foundation. They have so generously come here to present this check, provide their time, their service. So I really want to have you join me in welcoming Kelly and Carla, who stepped up for us, and also saying thank you to Tony. And so they're here to present the check for this year.
I would just, I'd like to say, if you get a chance to see the Hawks Nest Espresso, this is one of the, I've been a part of the foundation for six years, and having those students, they came and gave a live presentation to us, and it was hands-down the most rewarding experience any of us have had. And just checking out the kids that work there, it was really, really important to all of us. So Kelly and Carla are going to do a great job. $18,000 we get to give this year. And if you're not familiar with the foundation, fpsfoundation.org, we do teacher-initiated teacher recognition, if you'd like to make a donation to recognize a teacher or staff member. And we appreciate everything that you've done for us as well. Kathy, thank you.
Yeah. So recognition to Tony for the time that he's put in to the foundation. You know, it means a lot to you, and we're happy to have you as our consultant. So don't forget.
We have one more check for that.
And Kelly and I are very excited to be working together and working with the superintendent and really, you know, continue on the tradition of the foundation. So we're really excited to be here tonight, and thank you very much for the time.
Well, I know you both. And you guys have done a fantastic job. I was actually involved in bringing the foundation back to life over a decade ago, and you guys have just brought it into its flourishing. This is also a plug for anybody watching at home, if you want to help out, this is really important, an important group to be a part of, and we could use more hands, for sure.
And also, the town loves our trivia bee, which we will be doing again. I don't know, it will be in February, probably, February or early March?
End of February.
End of February. It's always a lot of fun. And besides yourself, I mean, there's Erica, James, Beth, I'm not sure if anyone else has been on the board, but have all either been on the board or liaison? And it's a great chance, you know, when we get a little tired of James, we will, I'm still a little bitter they chose the board instead of our board, but that's okay.
And just the last thing I want to say and thanks is that one of the reasons why I wanted to be board chair was to get a big check. So this is a highlight of my board event career. Thank you so much. We know how hard you work, we know how important, this is so important to our district, so we're very grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout-out, we have a couple folks in the audience that came here to support us, so we have a couple of our board members in the audience, so if you want to stand up quick.
New board members, too.
New board members, the folks that stepped up, new board members.
Thank you.
This is a great award to belong to after you come out of the elementary schools and you no longer have PTO. This is a great way to continue.
That's right. Do you want to take a picture or something?
I think I have trouble.
Bring Kathy in the chatroom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Put this in my bag right here. All right. I wasn't kidding about that check. All right, next item on, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kathy.
So transportation update. Matt Ross is going to provide an update. Matt's done a great job stepping up and meeting with Specialty Transportation, and we felt like we wanted to just have a follow-up from the last board meeting, just to see where we are.
So we continue to meet with Specialty weekly, and it's both on the central office side, as well as there's a separate meeting with the athletic director from the high school. Friday, I met with Mike Turner as well, just to kind of touch base. We're going to keep those as monthly standing. We meet weekly with Tim Griffin, the terminal manager. Regular routing has settled into what we would consider somewhat normal. There is still the occasional different variables, whether it's a traffic accident. We haven't had any weather so far, which is good. But for the most part, regular routing has settled. They did add two morning routes to Noah Wallace and Irving Robbins in an effort to improve route times and timely arrivals. As they onboard additional drivers or as the sports season levels out, they'll look at the potential of whether or not it makes a difference to run those in the afternoon as well. And we continue to address individual family concerns on an ongoing basis with open lines of communication with Specialty. You know, there's different, whether it comes in via email, phone call to central office, we have encouraged families to reach out directly to Specialty initially, and then there is additional follow-up that occurs. September invoices were received late last week and are still under review, and Mike did report on Friday that they do have four new drivers in training with an estimate of the end of the month to be licensed. But like we see in the industry, they have also lost a couple of drivers along the way as well, being courted by other companies offering a little bit more money here and there. So it's a net-net plus that they're bringing in more new drivers onto the team than what they're losing, and that's just a benefit in terms of spares, especially as we go into cold and flu season.
Thanks, Matt. Questions?
Erica?
Okay. Thank you. Just two questions. I know with the last month's update on this is the, in regards to teachers, I know that there was a significant amount of, or some teachers or staff from the schools that were riding on the bus as well to monitor. Has that been reduced, or is that back to normal, or is that still happening or not happening? And then the second is, and I could be wrong on this, but were there not supposed to be like, there was the driver and then a monitor and some of like the certain grades for the individual buses? Am I wrong on that?
We have one, we have one bus that we've contracted for a monitor for a particular student, but there are, while we are not requiring monitors, Specialty is placing monitors on some of their buses to assist, especially if they have substitute drivers that come in to cover a route. They'll put somebody who's experienced with the town on the bus as well to assist in navigation. And to my knowledge, there are no longer teachers, or it was Perez, that were riding, that was part of that initial month.
Angela?
I was following along with all the weekend updates, too, for the buses. So glad to hear, it seems like things have settled down a bit. I was concerned over the email we got over the IAR cross-country team. I know that parent was concerned, I think, because they missed the meet had to be canceled because Specialty couldn't provide the buses, which, you know, as someone who did sports in high school, I can relate to that. Only seven meets, you're missing one, that's the parent quoted, 14% of their meet. So was that truly just an anomaly situation, or are there other situations that we need to just be on the lookout for to make sure that those like extracurricular activities are being covered as well, and these kids aren't missing out on any additional, you know, events that they have to go to?
It was somewhat of an anomaly in terms of the stars aligning in terms with drivers being out and the number of runs on those particular days. We've worked with Specialty, and I followed up with both Mike and Tim on Friday about that, because there was, that same team was in somewhat jeopardy again, but we were able to shift things around to be able to accommodate and get them to their next meet. What it comes down to is, regular transportation takes the first priority in terms of getting kids to and from school. There's, like I said, there's a weekly meeting regarding athletic events, and getting the high school team sports does come at that next level of priority, and then there's the club and activities at the middle school level. Sometimes, in that particular case, it just happened to be those particular two days that lined up with driver call-outs and a number of high school runs in the same timeframe, and they just didn't have the bandwidth to be able to support it for those particular events. We've talked about ways to strategize in advance to hopefully not have that happen. At the same time, Tim's been really good about, he's calling other specialty yards trying to get vehicles from their other locations so that those things don't happen, and sometimes it just doesn't work out. So they have been really good about notifying the school, as soon as they know that there's a potential problem, the school is notified so that there can be other, whether it's planning for other arrangements, getting a message home to parents that, hey, we might need you to transport your student to this particular event. But in terms of the priorities, again, we're not seeing that with regular student transportation. We're trying, we've had similar incidences with the high school athletics as well, and trying to avoid that, and really working with Specialty to avoid impact on the middle school.
And then I know you said the September invoices are still like under review, but are examples like that being taken into consideration for like compensation that we should be getting back?
Yes.
Because they couldn't deliver on their contract?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt, first of all, thank you for stepping up to a truly thankless position and managing the transportation on our behalf. My question, first question is regards to communication. I know there was a lot of responses from the community about the lack of responses that they were getting from Specialty. Has that kind of remedied itself a little bit? Are they getting back to them in a timely manner for any concerns that are?
Based on what I know, they are, you know, again, we're kind of, most of what we're working with at this point are individual family concerns, and if there isn't a resolution between the family and Specialty, they'll loop us in for additional conversation as well.
And then, secondly, I know that there was a more experienced manager that was sitting in with Tim. Is that person still sitting in the terminal?
Not five days a week, but yes, is still mentoring Tim.
But the transition is kind of, they're starting to back out of that a little bit?
Correct. As things have settled.
Excellent. Thanks.
All right, everyone. I think what we'll do going forward is, we're all getting emails on this stuff, we'll kind of monitor it. You know, we don't meet again for another month. I mean, if there's a need for another update, we'll add it to the agenda, but you know, I would just say that as challenging as September has been, it does appear as if our partners at Specialty are doing everything they can to make it right. There's still more to come, obviously, and we're still continuing to hold them accountable. But I want to thank in particular Matt Ross stepping up in a massive way to help us manage this problem. So thanks, Matt. Okay.
Next item is the, we're going to just give a brief overview of our DLD convening, and so I'm going to hand this over to Kim.
Thank you, Kathy. We had a very exciting week and a busy week last week. We welcomed over 70 visitors, visiting educators and leaders from across North America as a part of the organization that we belong to called Deeper Learning Districts. We've been a member of this organization since last fall, and you can see on the slide the facilitators of this organization, Dr. Jal Maida from Harvard University and his colleagues. We've been sort of professional friends with Jal for a couple of years, having read his book called In Search of Deeper Learning. And at our PLX event in October of 2023, he was our keynote speaker. And I think his experience for that PLX event, as well as his participation in our winter retreat in January of this past year, really convinced him that we were a district that all the other districts needed to visit, which we've been planning for now for like six months. And so, you know, when you invest a lot of time and energy, you really have your fingers crossed and hope it all works out. And if a standing ovation is any testament to how the visitors felt, then I think we did a good job. It was really, you could see, our students were a part of this convening experience. They welcomed the visitors, and we also had a lunch with students as a choice for the visitors, and they were so fabulous, sitting out in the Grove with a few DLD members at their table, just, I mean, the visitors were so impressed with the way our students could speak about their learning experiences and themselves as global citizens of the future. And now, our teachers participated. I'm going to have Veronica describe a little bit about the PLX event itself. But I would say one thing that, a new sort of lens through which we are seeing our work as a result of this convening is this, we always talk about creating coherence. We want everyone to know where we're headed and feel like we're all in this together, and we can all speak about our mission, vision, framework for teaching and learning. But they remarked about how the twin goals of coherence and emergence are so strong in our district. And it was just a new, you know, way of talking about it, new language for us, but they really told us how powerful a feeling it was, that not only did our teachers and students understand, you know, who we are as a district and where we're headed, but that they felt a part of the innovation, the new ideas, that they were supported in coming forward with, you know, new ways of doing the work and the emerging practices that we celebrate and we understand are what make us really a learning organization. We're not implementing things from the top down, we're nurturing innovation at all levels. So I'll just have Veronica say a little bit about PLX. Some of us are very familiar, some may be still kind of getting the hang of what that means. But the DLD group came here to experience PLX on Tuesday, and then we had a debrief and follow-up on Wednesday and a half a day on Thursday.
Good evening, everyone. So I just wanted really to take this opportunity just to thank the many teachers who were involved in this day. So really, Kim described it very perfectly. We have a day where not only did we have our own teachers participating in professional development, but all of the DLD, which was, you know, 450 of our own teachers and probably another almost 70, maybe 65 or so visitors from all across the country who were here. And so we usually do this PLX event every two years, and I was just so appreciative to the teachers. We had over 148 teachers who volunteered to present on that day, mostly in teams, many of them in teams. And so we had over 70 unique sessions spread over three time periods, but some people did it twice, and one person I accidentally scheduled for three times, so that poor person had to do the same presentation. Never complained about it, though, never complained, because if he had just said, Veronica, you put me three times, I would have fixed it. But anyway, so three times, so thank you, especially to him, he knows who he is, but to all the teachers. We had, so that means we had 30 sessions, which means 30 selections during each time period that teachers could see, and it's just amazing, you know. It's a third of our teachers really who were involved in presenting in some way. But we really make an effort to say that these are not best practices, but promising practices that people are willing to share. And in that way, when, you know, it really resonates when Kim's talking about the coherence and the emergence, the emergence is, we're putting practices in front of each other and then all saying, oh, and you know, let's just work on it. It's a promising practice that we're still working on, and really working on that sort of along the way. I wanted to say, we also had students involved, so several of the sessions had students who came to be speakers and presenters, which is always very exciting. And at the end of the day, after the three sessions, there was also a chance for teachers to go back to their schools and consolidate the learning. And often what they're talking about is something that you'll see soon, which is our school development plans that Nicole already referenced. Many of them are talking about the sessions they went to and how they really fall into what the school's learning about and the school development plan that they're working on. So in that way, there's all that coherence, too, like coherence in the structures of how, you know, our school development plans then also, you know, drive the sessions and drive the learning. In a shortcut way, I wanted to, for the PLX, sort of tell them, like, this is the work we're working on, but I didn't want to, you know, it's really hard to put in front of people the VOGC and the Framework for Teaching and Learning, because they're both such deep documents that we're still always unpacking. So in a shortcut kind of way, I wanted to say to the DLD that was visiting, like, when we say deeper learning, these are the kinds of things we're working on. So I'm not going to read the slide to you, but you can see there, those are all sort of the ideas that we're working on in all of our classes, K through 12. And so any of the sessions that teachers saw could be slotted into somewhere on there. And so, you know, a teacher who's interested in, you know, how can I do curriculum or projects better, they would have multiple choices to go to, to try to learn some more about what's happening across the district. So a very exciting day, everybody who does it loves it. I also want to say, we had many teachers who are newer to the district who volunteered to present, so, which is really nice to see also, that we have so many people. And a lot of people who said, you know, it's really hard, it's the beginning of the year, I mean, this happened already, you know, in October, and we just got the school year started, and people had the plan for this, but really happy to have done it and pushed themselves to do that. Everyone found it to be a really rewarding experience. So just a great day in Farmington, and just so much, so proud that that many teachers, you know, 150 teachers, and really, the DLD was blown away, but really, I mean, our teachers were so amazing. So I just want to, I mean, we thank them, but you know, publicly, I wanted to thank all the teachers that have stepped forward and do this. And the teachers, everyone participates and continues to enhance the work that we're doing. So great day.
Any questions? What does PLX stand for?
Professional Learning Exchange. Yes. So many people who are in the DLD left with the idea that they would like to replicate the experience in their own districts.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Results and outcomes?
Yeah, so the results and outcomes booklet is the accountability report that we provide to the Board of Education every fall, and it represents the results of the previous year. So every year, we provide our school and program development plans to you with our strategic priorities, and then in the fall of the next year, we report out on that to the board and community. So Kim's going to give an overview of this year's results and outcomes report.
Right. Thank you. So nothing on this next slide should look unfamiliar to you. Our school development and program development plans are organized into these three categories. And so I just highlighted for you here in the bullets, the kinds of things that we're working on over time. These are not obviously any one-and-done kind of efforts, but this past year, we really worked hard to deepen our work around crew and advisory, moving into the idea of helping students better understand how to resolve conflicts, how to have restorative conversations. I think when we had Diane Hacker here, she talked about the peace path, so things like that, strategies like that, that help our students to really better understand themselves and how to work with each other. We had a tremendous focus on attendance. Our data showed that we had some concerning data around chronic absenteeism, and so along with Kristin Wilder, our family engagement specialist, each school really attacked the issue of attendance in different ways and similar ways. And we made some great progress. Everyone was feeling like all the effort paid off, and they're continuing that focus this year. Certainly, we've had many examples of student leadership and student voice to help all of our schools really deepen this idea that we all belong, and East Farms' presentation tonight was a great example of that. In academic achievement, we are, we last year were focused primarily around phonics instruction in terms of the literacy block and seeing some very promising results from that focus. I think you all saw presentations last year and heard us speak a lot about making thinking visible in classrooms and the cognitive engagement that we were going after there. Veronica's Summer Institute was also focused on that, so teachers really, and then presenting at PLX the things they learned. Our challenge and support blocks, which are a part of every school's program, really last year focused more deeply on the population of high-need students, to make sure that those students in particular, among all of our students, but those students in particular were really receiving the support they needed, and really thinking deeply about the curriculum itself, and are we attending to the interests and the ways in which the curriculum can support students themselves and what they'd like to learn and how they'd like to learn it. And then, again, deeper learning being the focus in teaching and learning, also the focus of instructional coaching, and we are, last year, thinking more about how we can use our exhibitions and performances of understanding to help students really take ownership for the Vision of the Global Citizen Goals. And so I think we have some new And we are, last year, thinking more about how we can use our exhibitions and performances of understanding to help students really take ownership for the vision of the Global Citizen Goals. And so I think we have some new things coming this year for ways in which students can exhibit their learning and put learning on display. So those are just some highlights from last year, and I'm certainly, you know, open to any questions that you have from the report.
Angela?
So I enjoyed reading through it, just to kind of see all the information presented. As a parent, one of my things that I like to do when it comes out is like the family survey, because I just feel like that's a great tool for the district to gather information from the parents in terms of feedback. And then I also enjoy, I actually didn't realize the students got a survey as well until I was reading through this, so that was very interesting to see the results as well. For the family survey, I know, because I took the survey as a parent, not all of the questions are summarized in this report. Is there anywhere where we can see the results to all the questions that were asked on the survey?
We do have that information. I think traditionally, every year, we've kind of highlighted the ones that we felt most closely aligned with the school goals in each of the areas. But we have that, we do have that information. Principals present it to faculty each year.
So we could, could we see it? Like, could I, could we get a copy of that?
Well, again, this is a situation where you're asking someone from the board, from the district to provide data that's generally not provided to the board. So I'm going to, again, kind of tell you, you know how I feel about that.
Sure.
As the board chair. So I'm going to kind of get a sense of the board, is this something that the board would like?
Can we just have discussion before we do, like?
No.
Well, because I have a question on what you're saying, though. I'm not understanding what you're saying.
You're out of order at this point now. Does anybody want this question answered? Want this data provided to the board as a collective?
I'm okay with the highlights, but...
It's okay. If the board wants it, I have no problem with it. I just, I'm uncomfortable with individual board members requesting data for themselves. That sets a precedent. And if we're going to request data of anybody from the district, it should be data that we all want. So that's why I feel the way I do about it, nothing more than that. Yes, Angela?
Can you just clarify, because I do have an unanswered email about this very topic. So I would just like clarification, like, are you referring to policy 901-5C? And I understand what you're saying, and that states that no individual board member can issue orders to someone at the central office. So I completely understand what you're referring to in that sense. However, this is an agenda item, and there is, a survey was given. The results are obviously somewhere, I'm not asking for any additional work to be done. Just what was presented to me in this agenda packet, which is, I was asked to review as a board member. All the results are not here. I don't need any additional work done in terms of summarizing. I could even use raw data if that is less. I guess I'm confused when you're saying I'm asking for additional work. Like, if a survey was done and the results are somewhere, I don't know where they are, they're somewhere. Is it really additional work according to this policy 901-5C for me just to request to see those, to see the results? I'm not asking for additional work, I don't need anyone to summarize, or I don't need a new presentation. You know, to me, like, if I'm asked to review something and I, as a parent, took a survey and I don't see the results to all the questions, some of which I find, you know, thought-provoking, isn't that my role as a board member to ask for that additional clarification?
Well, what I would say is, I'm unclear why you feel like you haven't been provided the information. You're the only one who's expressed some concern or reservation with the materials that have been provided.
That's not what I said at all, though, I didn't say I haven't...
You said the materials were, you didn't get everything that was, you didn't get all the data, right?
Bill, there was a survey, if it had 20 questions, and I don't even know, I'm not, I wasn't prepared with this type of data. If there was a survey that was given to parents with 20 questions and were provided the results of 15 of those questions, how is that, I'm not, I don't even know, I don't even know, how can I even speak intelligently about those other five questions if I don't even know what the data looks like?
What are you speaking about with the other 10 questions? I'm not following you. What are you concerned about? What is it that you're concerned about?
Bill, I don't have the data, I can't speak intelligently to any of this. So as an example, I would say I gathered from when I was looking at the student survey, always the lowest answer for the student surveys was the one associated with, it was different for elementary to the different grades, but it was, my schoolwork is not too hard or too easy, it's just right for me. That always had the lowest percent favorable. So like, I was thinking about that and thinking, have we dug deeper into that to think? That can mean two different things. That can mean maybe some kids think the work is too hard, maybe some kids think the work is too easy. And one of my follow-up questions was just going to be like, has that raised, you know, a thought to anyone in the central office? And are we doing anything?
Sounds like you're asking the question right now. Kim?
No, Bill, I think you're missing my point. That was just one question that I got from looking at the data here. So I would just like to have the opportunity to look at the comprehensive data to see if there was any other thought-provoking questions that I had. If it's a problem, I can follow up with you after. This was not supposed to be...
I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, it's not difficult, I just don't understand, based on the policy I think you're referring to, and if you're referring to a different policy, it's saying no individual board member can issue orders. I'm just not taking it as issuing orders to ask for data.
Well, historically, that's how this policy's been interpreted.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm kind of aligning with the way the policy's been interpreted in the past, okay?
So is the stance, I can't, I basically can't see the data?
No, no, no individual, I'm asking the board. If the board feels like this is data that we should all want, we all want to see. Because again, it won't go to just you, it'll go to all of us. And so I want to see if this is something that the rest of the board wants. Because no individual board member's going to get specific data just to their question without, to the exclusion of the other eight board members, right?
Totally understand that, and I guess the other side of this is, this is public record. So if any individual citizen wanted to get this information, it could be requested via the Freedom of Information Act.
That's fair.
I mean, I just don't feel like that's the culture we want here, where, so if I want this information and it's not voted on here, this would have to be requested via the Freedom of Information Act, which I don't think is the culture we would want here. But I don't know, I guess I'm getting to a point where I'm trying to come prepared. I have some additional questions, but if it's not appropriate, then it's not...
No, I'll just, I'll just say then, not hearing anybody expressing one way or the other, Kim, would you be good enough to provide that data to the entire board, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just clarify that the data is analyzed at the school level with faculty, and that is how we develop the school development plan. That's one piece of data that we have, along with achievement data, and, you know, whether it's internal assessment or the state assessment. So when you see the school development plan, just know that since that survey was done and all the data we collected, that's how we create our priorities for the next year. So it's very data-driven. I just want to say that if you see any areas that are lower in the survey results, you should expect to see that priority here in the next month when we go over the school and program development plan.
So that would be the place where if Angela had questions from the data, it would be in that agenda item at the next meeting that she could ask those questions?
Sure, sure.
Okay, just have a comment. Just for the public's education here, this agenda packet that we have is 821 pages long. I think we have mountains and mountains of data to review as a board, and we've got plenty of information to look at here. Also, I think we should be very, very careful as a board to insinuate that the district is not adequately applying the data and looking into ways to use the data to improve the district. I think we should just be very careful of that.
Thank you, James.
I agree.
Bill, just one quick question.
Sure.
So, and I was going through the document, and not for today, but maybe just for my own purposes to better understand this. On page 13 of the document, which is, of course, like James said, it's like 800 and something pages.
Yeah.
But I'm, my areas of interest are around the equity and leaders and some of the, you know, the data here around the med standards on SPAC, literacy, math, SPA, and then college course enrollment, and where you see, you know, our breakdown of demographics, you know, all students, Asian, Black, Hispanic, white, Black, Hispanic are scoring fairly on the lower end. But, you know, not too concerning, but still, it's an area that I would want to, you know, in the sense of how in these areas here, a priority, right? And is that all of these are applied to all populations across the board, which I 100% understand through reading the documents here. But I guess, and I don't know if I'm going to ask the question correctly, but how do we target specific learning areas for populations that may be within our student communities struggling more than others?
Sure, so, you know, Kim and Veronica can provide even more information, but we do have an equity framework, and we apply that equity framework in our school development plans and our teacher goals. So when we see any data like that, there's a lot of data underneath that, that we have to dig deeper.
Yep.
And we call what you're seeing today a satellite data. It's data that kind of shows a moment in time. And then we have street data, and that's the data that we work with our students every day, their goal setting, we're monitoring, and they're monitoring their formative assessments. So a lot of the work that we do in the equity area is in that area, at the ground floor, in our classrooms, with our students, having them set goals, ensuring that whatever we provide in this district has an equity lens, meaning there's full access for all students. And over time, we've made great strides in the number of students accessing college credit-bearing courses over time, that has improved. We've seen sometimes better years than others in this data. But as this board is very equity-focused, we are equity-focused, and that is our work every single day to ensure, you know, this idea of belonging, student voice and leadership is very important in equity work. We want every child to be seen, to be heard, to be valued for who they are as an individual. And we know when that happens, students are much more able to access grade-level curriculum, believe in themselves as learners. And so family engagement's another good example. When we partner with our families, when we're calling our families, saying, we miss your child today because we want your child in school. So you're going to see like the high-trust classroom culture. We do a lot of equity work in the crew time or the advisory time. And being warm demanders means that we have very high expectations for every child, but we're there to support every child in getting there. We don't just say, oh, we have high expectations, meet them. You have to provide the structures in place to do interventions and have a challenge and support block. That's a great example, I could go on and on, of a very equity-focused structure. In the past, we would pull students out of core instruction for interventions with a challenge and support block. We push in for those interventions during a period of time so that no one's losing their core academic time, so that they're getting both core academics and interventions. So we're always, in each of these areas, you would probably find, like, the roots of it in this equity work that we engage in, because it isn't, those, the data that you see there is not acceptable to us, it's not acceptable to this community. We want all students achieving at high levels. So, I mean, those are a few little examples, but I think it's a good topic to further explore with the board, maybe have a presentation from a school, because, you know, that's some work we're really proud of, but we'll never be done with. We'll always be, you know, getting better, trying to get better. And a lot of the things that you hear when we bring students here, it's because we believe very strongly in student voice and leadership and that they should know who they are as a learner and as a person. But really, our work is to know themselves, like, where I am with my learning targets, what I need extra support in, what I'm, you know, really good at, and kind of build off those strengths. We really want a strengths-based approach here. So I appreciate you highlighting, you know, that data, because that is data that we look at. We do case studies on it, we have lots of routines around looking at data and digging deep and trying to find those root causes.
Thanks, Kim.
Bill?
Yeah?
I just, Kim, with the family engagement and student engagement surveys, what is the response rate, just average? I know it might be a little different from school to school.
Yeah, it is a little different, school to school, but it's in the upper 30s, 30% range, low 40% range.
And then the only other comment I had was on physical education. And, you know, they're not great, you know. And I'm actually surprised about that, because, you know, we have a lot of, you know, student athletes, you know, starting...
I know, I know, it just doesn't feel like it reflects our students.
What we see.
What we see.
Yeah.
We have, you know, very active children. Our new department chair for health, PE, and wellness is trying a new strategy. I think in the past, we've done the assessments at the end of the year all at once. And she is trying, and we'll see if this has an impact on those results, that in the unit of study during which students are working on mostly, you know, flexibility, they take the sit-and-reach portion of the assessment right then and there while they're kind of in the zone of working on that. And when they're doing the mile run, they're going to then take that portion of the test. And maybe by splitting it up over time, we'll see, you know, greater reflection of what kids can really do in that assessment. But it is a perplexing data point for us.
One that I pay attention to, and everyone knows I do. The principals know everyone, because I agree with you. We have really active students, students who we work a lot on, not only mental health, but physical health in the district. I will say we have gotten better, we have, over time, but not where we want to be. And so we're constantly, as Kim said, trying different ways of making sure that, again, these tests are satellite, they're a moment in time, they don't reflect who our kids are every single day, you know, that, we always have to keep that in mind with satellite data. But it's something that doesn't seem to really match what we see every day with our students. I think this is a statewide challenge, it is not a Farmington challenge. If you go into the data, you will see across many districts, it's confusing and surprising.
Well, do they have to pass every?
Yes.
So that's the...
I really doubt you jumped in.
Well, I, because... Because I can say, I can speak to my own children. I know my son, who's now graduated, could pass everything but the one side of the sit-and-reach. But, so that means like if you don't pass one part, you don't pass.
Right. And for some of those, they're not, they're not preferred tasks for some, you know, it's not like, if you're really good at one of those things, you're really excited about that one thing, but there could be something that you also have to pass that is not preferred for you. So that's where we have some challenges, because they do have to pass all of them.
I would never do the sit-and-reach.
So you can run a six-minute mile, but not touch your toes on your right side or whatever, and you'd fail.
And you probably remember that I'm co-chair of the statewide Assessment and Accountability Committee, and this is something we're looking at with the state, that some of those assessments are just physically very challenging for certain individuals. And so we want something that is more accessible for all. So we are working on it, it's just going to take many years to develop a new one, because you have to test it out, you have to pilot it, you have to make sure there's no bias. And, you know, so it takes quite a number of years, but they are working on it, because they see this as a pervasive issue across Connecticut.
Thank you.
Okay, class size report.
So every year, we bring you this report as well. It gives you a snapshot of where all class sizes are across the school district. Kim is going to just provide an overview of this report.
Yes, so we prepare this report in conjunction with the enrollment report so that when we move into budget season, you have these two fundamental pieces of information for you to look at. So in this report, on pages seven through 14, you see elementary school...
you see elementary school class sizes by school and by grade. The average across K6 is 20.35 students to one. The average typically, I'm sorry, typically in our earlier grades, we have smaller class sizes. And that is generally the case this year. On pages 12 to 14, you see a more detailed view of class distribution across the district. So it will show you that we have 13 sections of kindergarten classes with an average of 17.4 students per class. And on page 14, it shows we have 14 sections of grade six with an average of 23 students per class. So that just gives you a sense of what's in this report. On page 16, we begin to look at IAR class size. And here, again, you see smaller, when you see smaller numbers, it really indicates classes that are intentionally designed to have more support for students. The remainder of the report provides you an overview of class sizes by discipline at the high school. And courses with noteworthy low enrollment are either intentionally designed, as they are at IAR, for more targeted support. Or sometimes we have small class sizes because it is very hard to schedule students into all of the electives that they'd like to be in. And I do acknowledge that we continue to have small sizes in our Aspire and Capstone and some of our specialized elective courses, like the End of a Sequence, like AP French or Digital Design 2 is small. But once you get kids excited in Digital Design 1, it's hard to say, "Oh, we're not going to offer Digital Design 2." So we really do the best we can. It is a moving target over the summer with students, you know, finding out that they can't get into one section. And so that sometimes makes them take two or three, make two or three changes in their schedule, and that moves class sizes around. But we're always trying to support our students and give them the courses they want and continue in a sequence of ever more challenging work when that's something they're really passionate about. I will also just say that this was a busy summer with new high school. And so I know in the fall right now, as a matter of fact, the department leaders are sitting down with this class size report and with the program of studies, which typically gets finalized by the end of December, and taking a look at opportunities where maybe sports analytics used to be the most popular course out there, and now we have diminishing numbers. So maybe we can combine that with another, I know, I can't remember the name of the course right now, but another course that's focused on math and science and athletics. And so they will take a look at these classes and make new recommendations for courses they think might serve the interests of our students well and also serve the kinds of programmatic improvements we're trying to make. So this afternoon on our Board of Ed Curriculum Committee meeting, Veronica gave a little preview of the Science Program Review outcomes, which you will be hearing more about at an upcoming meeting. So those kinds of programmatic improvements, which will include the addition of new courses in a sequence, in a pathway, in order to make that happen, it might mean that some other electives might just go away or they might be repackaged. So that, as I said, a moving target. We're always looking at these things. Student interests change over time. For a number of years, we had high interest in our Latin program. As you see now, we have good interest, but not as high as it used to be. So things like that are, the hard decisions we're making, and we try to make good decisions in advance of staffing budget time because it's a domino effect. And just the other thing I want to remind you of and bring to your attention, although you may see in any department a couple of classes with low enrollment, and you think, "Well, couldn't we save some FTEs here? Like, maybe we shouldn't offer those courses." Or maybe those courses get delayed and they're offered every other year. And we could save, you know, .2 of an FTE. But we have to remember that we're talking about people and full-time teachers. And so although at times it may feel like we could really capture some FTEs back, we're talking about reducing a full-time teacher's position to something part-time. And when you reduce a full-time teacher to part-time, you risk losing a very talented teacher. So that's a balance that we are always looking carefully at. I want you to know that we do talk about it and we're really mindful of not having excessive, you know, numbers of teachers in very small class sizes. We don't want to do that. But we want to offer exciting programming for our students and we want to keep our talented teachers. I'm trying to think if there's anything else I wanted to tell you. Nope, I think that was it. So does anyone have any questions about this report?
Real quick, just for maybe the new board members who haven't had this report yet, what does the push-up mean?
What is the word push-up? That's the next.
Okay. I'll jump to Eddie, I'm sorry, never mind.
Yep, okay.
I'm reading them both at the same time.
Yep.
All right, sorry. Any questions on this, guys? Angela?
I just had, it doesn't really matter, but like there's a small typo on.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think the total is right, but it's saying there's like six East Farm fourth-grade classes. There's only five on page 13 of your report. So I think the totals are actually tied, but just if you wanted to correct it, like right here.
Yeah, page 13.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else?
Bill, I just had a quick question.
Sure.
So I think we reintroduced was personal finance?
Yes.
And wow, 210. And that's not a mandatory class, correct?
It will.
It is. Financial literacy is mandatory, starting with the sophomore class. That's awesome.
Well-needed class.
But wow.
Anyone else? Sorry. October 1st, enrollment report.
So each year, we provide you with an overview of October 1 enrollment and the projections for the coming school year and any recommendations. This is the foundation of our budget development when it comes to the number of teachers we will need for the coming school year. It's important to note that the 25-26 projections come in three versions. You've only had two in the past. This year, you get an extra one. Two of them are the push-up numbers. Push-up numbers are simply taking the current class numbers and pushing them up to the next grade level. Then we also have, and we don't use those for projections because they actually don't work out well. So I know probably instinctively, we'd say, "Just push up the numbers and that will be the budget." And that actually doesn't work out because we have students coming and going every year and we have cohort changes every year. So we give you the most reliable one, which is the retention ratio projections that we do use for budget purposes. And they are the most accurate over many, many years for us. This year, due to the board's approved and elementary enrollment option to alleviate overcrowding at East Farms, M and P, formerly known as SLAM, has provided the projections we will use for budgeting purposes for this year only due to the movement of students from East Farms to Noah Wallace as well as other features of the elementary enrollment option. So you can imagine if we just did retention ratio, we're not counting those students who are actually moving. And so we would have inaccurate numbers to then build a budget off of. So if you look at this slide on page three, you're going to see the total 10-1-24 enrollment, which is 4,096 students. It does not include our preschool students, 99, or our Farmington Valley Transition Academy. So I always say to the board, just know there are other students that are not accounted for in here, like magnet students and other students going to different places that we budget for and we're responsible for budgeting for, but they're not in this enrollment report. This is really about FTEs and planning FTEs for the next year. Page four, we had three more students pre-K 12 in 2024-2025 than last year. That's not a big difference, but three more. And we had five less students than we projected. So that's a really good projection when there's only five student difference. That's on page seven. Page 10 and pages 16 through 19 provide you with detailed projections, push-up, retention ratio, and the M and P projections. I'll show you those slides. We also, in pages 12 through 14, talk about building permits because those have an implication on projections. And those were considerations in the projections and in the elementary ad hocs work. If you remember, we studied that and we had a town representative on the committee just to think out, not just today, but out into when these buildings actually are welcoming families to them. Page 15 provides the recommendations that I have for the board, given the projections. So if you look at the next slide, you're going to see the projections in three versions. You have the retention ratio, the push-up numbers for every school, and then M and P Planning Group and their projections. The last one is bolded because that's what we're going to use for the 25-26 budget because that takes into account your recommended option that involves some student movement from East Farms to Noah. The next slide. So here you see the bottom line. Retention ratio, we would project 4,052 students. The push-up numbers, 3,987 students. And then the M and P Planning Group enrollment projections, 4,101. So they have a different retention ratio formula. So this is a really good test for us to see if our retention ratio wins the day next year or M and P did something, you know, marvelous and there's a new factor. And I will say, they did consider new factors. If you remember, when they presented to you, we never saw a decline in enrollment when every, almost every other district besides South Windsor was seeing big declines in enrollment. And then we saw a bit of an uptick during COVID. So they've now put that in their formula. And we've had a consistent formula over decades. So we're going to see how this plays out. But when Kim slash Veronica are, we're in the budget, we have staffing meetings with our elementary principals. And we're going to say, you know, the ratio is one teacher for every 19.5 students. Again, that's funny because they don't come in .5s, but that's, it works out by using that. When it comes to how many teachers we're going to need by grade level, it's really important, I use the M and P because I would be staffing very differently for East Farms than I would for Noah when you look at the differences in those numbers from the retention ratio to M and P planning because they've considered the movement of students from those streets over to Noah Wallace. So next slide. These are the recommendations you'll see in the report. You know, just continuing to monitor and think about how we did with the elementary enrollment work and just keeping, monitoring that and just to see the impact of the committee's recommendation and the approved option on school capacities and enrollment. Special education needs. Some of you have not been through this report. If you had been here quite a while, you would see that we've added specialized programming in Farmington, which takes up class space, which then makes the capacity of a building lower because we're using those spaces. So we're always keeping an eye on the special education needs. We are seeing increased enrollment in our SLCs. Would we potentially have to come to you in the budget and add another class? Potentially. So that would then, if we have to add another class, it would lower the capacity of a school by one classroom. So that's another area. Student needs. You know, we're always looking at the needs of students and programming, and sometimes there's a new specialized program that we may say we've researched and we believe our students need this. And that, again, could take some classrooms offline, so we monitor that. We do have a K8 facility review for every single one of our schools. And we keep an eye on that during budget season. What projects are we going to complete, short-term and long-term? Again, that can have an impact on facility capacity. So that's something else we look at. And then housing developments and trends. We've seen a big uptick in housing developments, some of which will impact our schools, some of which won't. But we keep a very close eye on that and you can see how the town updates that section of our report every year. So that's a summary of the enrollment report.
Questions? Angela?
I found it interesting in the, like, M and P model that you're using. I don't remember, and I just might be misremembering, were any of the models initially where, so Noah Wallace and that model actually has higher, will have higher attendance than East Farms next year.
Yes.
In that, which I thought was interesting. I don't remember that. Is that something, they have capacity? I mean, when I think of the two buildings, I don't think of Noah Wallace as the, a building that would have more people than East Farms, you know, just.
Yeah, it has more capacity.
Yeah, so, okay, that's interesting. Was that the case even when SLAM?
If you remember back when we brought East Farms, the five kinders over, kindergartens?
I was part of that, I remember it well, yes.
So just think about five kindergartens, additional 100-plus students. And it was very, it was easily dealt with with still keeping the pre-Ks at Noah. So it has a larger capacity, it just has more classroom space.
Except for the 10:00 a.m. lunch, that was not the best part. But yes, other than that, other than that, it did work. Okay, that's interesting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Kathy. Elementary enrollment update.
Yeah, so this is a very timely update for you because you've just now had the enrollment report and we thought these two reports should be together or this update and our enrollment report should be together. So Matt is going to give you a quick overview of our internal work as we continue to plan for the 25-26 implementation of the recommendation.
Thanks. So just to kind of recap, this work has been going on for several years. The board voted for Scenario 3, Option 3 in the May-June 2024 timeframe. And we've been meeting as an internal group all summer and into the fall, working on refining the numbers, working with M and P to develop an interactive map, which is currently posted on our registration page. And we've done site visits to both Westwoods and Noah Wallace to assemble a list for budgetary purposes for any work that needs to occur at those schools in association with the switching of these students from Noah to, from East Farms to Noah Wallace and the impact of pre-K moving over to Westwoods as well. After tonight's meeting and giving you the update, we plan to send a general communication to families and then also send a targeted communication to those directly impacted by the change. And we're in discussions about dates that look good for open houses and meet and greets for those families, most likely hosted at Noah Wallace, the school building in which those students will then attend.
Thank you, Matt. Just as a kind of reminder, when the elementary ad hoc committee, once we ratified the ad hocs recommendations, one of the things the board asked was that we get updates. one of the things the board asked was that we get updates from the district through this particular school year just to let us know what's going on in terms of communication and community outreach. And I expect we'll have another one in the spring. So there'll be another, there'll be another update before we get to the school year on this. Any questions with Matt? Erica?
Just one quick question. I do recall in, in this discussion about families who maybe were directly impacted and wanted the consideration to remain or was, where, I can't, you have to refresh my memory, where we landed on that or is that going to be allowed, not allowed? I can't remember.
I mean, we have that as a policy. I think there would have to be room. So that's the challenge is having the room to say yes. That's one of the, the elements of the board allowing for it is that there has to be room in that particular classroom or that particular grade to add a student without overcrowding that grade level. So that would be the, you know, the decision that would have to be made.
And then my last question on that particular topic, because I know we, during public comment, we heard some, from some families and so forth. Have you, have families started to make requests or have?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, just wondering.
It usually doesn't happen until the spring. So that's probably why we haven't.
Okay. Thank you.
Same question. And then, did anybody ask to actually get placed earlier? That was part of the transition?
We did have a few families that transitioned over. They were new to that particular, like a particular street and just felt, I don't want to have a year here and then move. So some did. And we had room, but only where we had room. Again, it's part of the policy is only if we have room.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, Bill, I have a quick. Is there any update on the movement of the preschool or preschools? Where that stands?
So we're, we're making plans. We've surveyed the, the space and we're working on getting some budgetary numbers around what needs to happen, including the playground. But we, we've got some preliminary designs at this point in terms of what, what needs to happen.
Thank you. Okay. State tests, 2024 results report.
So Veronica is going to provide an overview of the 2024 state level assessments for only K eight. The next meeting, you'll see the high school state assessment results. And so I'll just welcome Veronica up here.
So it's three through eight, take the smarter balanced and several grades take the NGSS, fifth grade, eighth grade and 11th grade. So back to the comment before about how this is the satellite data. So really before we sort of look at, so I really want to say we're just going to look at it at a high level of some of the big key takeaways here. But you have all the details in the report in terms of our student achievement, including some comparisons with other districts that we generally compare ourselves to, sort of based on their demographic characteristics as well. I do think it's important to just always note when we're looking at this kind of data that this is just one measure. You know, we sort of touched on that a little bit, a little while ago. This is one moment in time. Every child has a story. Students who are ELL, for example, that you just saw today, they take that test. If they're in third grade and they arrive, they're taking this assessment. So just know that we know the story. Like we're just looking at data, but these are children and they're children that we know deeply at every school and their story and all the reasons behind the wise that you might be interested in in terms of the performance. And then there's also the question of what is a test like this measuring? On the one hand, content knowledge, but also for some students, it's the ability to take a test or the ability to self-regulate or the ability to stick with a non-preferred task. So I just want to make clear that there are maybe many reasons that you see the performance that you see. But I would say overall, very strong performance. So, so I say that and we have strong performance. And so I wanted to do it in three categories, just the overall performance, which is really what you have there in, in summary format. But strong performance relative to the state and to other districts. One really strong indicator of achievement is in math, 50% of our students are in the advanced band in the four or above. So there's four bands. And so 50% of our students are in that advanced band, which is really impressive. And I wanted to point out that literacy, seventh and eighth graders demonstrate high achievement relative to peers. So again, in that appendix, you would see that our students are like second or third in our DIRK, which means they're very high up in the state as well. So those are some, some really strong performance points that I wanted to highlight. In high needs, there's also, you know, and this really addresses the question that Erica had a little while ago. Because while those numbers are not something that we would like to see, I do want to point out that the state also separates out students into high needs groups. If a student is high needs, it means they have one or more of the following characteristics. So ELL, students with some sort of disability or are on free reduced lunch. So any one of those three will put students, will, will sort of check off the indicator, high needs. And so one thing that I think Farmington should be very proud of is our performance with our high need students. In math, Farmington Public Schools students in that category, high needs are 10%, are, are in the top 10% of the state in performance. So that, you know, so to that point, like how are we doing with high need students? Or, you know, in, in students that maybe aren't always, you know, sort of typically performing, that's a great indicator. Literacy, I also wanted to put 10%, but it was so much higher than that that I couldn't limit myself to. And I couldn't say five because that felt like it's disingenuous. So I had to say 6%. So in literacy, the Farmington Public Schools students in this high needs care category are in the top 6% of the state in performance. And then in science, more than 50% of students who are in the high needs group pass the test. And this is fifth in the state of Connecticut. So with a group of students as considered high needs, Farmington teachers are doing, you know, relatively well. I just wanted to point that out. And that's one of the, that's one way to measure. You know, are we making progress with students? And then I really wanted to also say that the state in the areas of math and literacy, not science, because science tests don't happen every year. But in the other years, they do look at the growth. You know, one of the indicators we look at is growth. Do students make growth? But here's, here's the trick to this. The state sets an ambitious target, meaning that they only expect 40% of students to achieve the full growth amount. That's like, that's the, the level that it's set at is for 40% of students to actually meet that number. Because they want it to be sufficiently ambitious. And, and you do get credit. Eventually, there's another indicator that, for getting partial points. But in terms of getting the full points, like a binary, yes or no, whether the student made the full growth, they only expect 40% of students to do that. And in math, 53% of Farmington students meet that growth target and 47% of Farmington students reach the growth target in, in literacy. So all very, very strong, very strong indicators. I think that, you know, some ways to improve are, as you, as much as you know that this is a district really committed to deeper learning, you know, I think that there is something to be said for doing maybe a little more practice with non-preferred tests of this, of the genre. So I think that's one thing. I also think we've had a lot of, as you know, we've had a lot of new teachers come into our school and into the profession. And we really haven't revisited the kinds of questions that students will see. So even though we do some, you know, looking at the test or familiarizing students with the format of the test, some of the ways that the questions are asked are, are, you know, we, we don't, we don't do that for a, a long period of time. And I don't suggest that we should, but maybe longer than we do currently. And then, like I said, familiarizing even teachers with the kinds of questions that are asked on these assessments, you know, could, could boost our performance. Although it's already a very solid, you saw the numbers, already a, a solid performance by our students. So anyway, like I said, this is satellite data. You know, we could, I'm sure you could pick out a student and we would know, the teachers would know, you know, the, the whole background and story of any particular student. But it, it's a, again, satellite data to, to give you an overall sense of how students are doing.
Thanks. Again, these are state tests too. We, we have our own ways. Public Schools has our own metrics as to whether, you know, assessing a student achievement. This is just, you know, us following the, the state rules, right? Any questions? Okay, on to the next one. Professional appointments, resignations and retirements.
So we have three resignations and two appointments within this month's work.
Deeper learning updates, next item?
Just please, I invite everyone to review our deeper learning updates from all of our schools. We're really proud of our students, our teacher staff and administrators when it comes to this work.
Thank you, Kathy. Can you say something about, didn't one of our students meet Joe Biden though?
Yes, you know, it was Ray, Bella.
Yeah, can you, yeah, call that out a little bit?
Yes, so she met Joe and Jill Biden and was provided with a, an award over girls leading the way. And just such a prestigious honor. And we were thrilled to find out about it right before it was about to happen. So I was, I brought all of my family around that computer to watch Ray. And we were all so excited to see, you know, one of our students, you know, shine at the national level. And she has fabulous photos from the day.
That's great. That's great. Okay, thank you. All right, on to the next item, larger item on the agenda. Item six, unfinished business, budget impact, budget update.
So Matt is going to provide us with an overview of budget impact and update.
So the business office is still living in three years, three fiscal years. Fiscal year 24 is closed out, but they're working with the auditors on our annual audit. We're in the current budget year. And you'll hear more about that during the financial reports. And we're, we have already started preparing for fiscal year 26. Capital meetings are occurring at the school level this week and next week for that planning. And school leaders will be conferring with their teams on budgets towards the end of the month. We'll be distributing budget worksheets to the, the school principals at the end of October. All our best, our grants are fully encumbered and obligated at this point. And we're already looking at some of the upcoming, the drivers for the upcoming budget, which continue to be contractual obligations, increases to cost of, cost of goods and services, utility increases and special services.
Matt, of those drivers, which, would you characterize special services perhaps the largest?
Yeah, as, as it stands right now, yes.
Look forward to hearing more on that as we get into the budget, budget season. Okay. Next item is policy, I'm sorry, unfinished item B, policy update, second reading. Policy 4118.1 and 4118.1A, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment personal. Kathy?
Yep. So these two policies and their, the regulations attached were presented at the last board meeting. And I opened it up if anyone has any questions. We have many policies. This evening, we met as a policy committee last week, but these are second reading.
Beth is policy chair. Want to comment on that at all?
Well, this is the second reading since.
Yeah, I wasn't here for the first, sorry.
Oh. I mean legislative, basically. And that's what we're seeing a lot of.
Okay, this is, this came from, from Shipman Goodman. Okay. Any questions, comments? Angela?
So I had some questions on this last time. Is it accurate to say before these changes, we were in compliance with Connecticut law?
I, I was, we always comply with Connecticut law and federal law, both. And that's in your policies, that you comply with both. And this was a change to Title IX, the final rule. And so our policies have to now align to that. But you are right. This, the final rule is more like Connecticut law. It's very much mirrored after Connecticut law. I would say some of the procedural issues that we found with the last requirements prior to this, the Title IX was very difficult for a district our size. We have very few administrators here, especially at the central office level. And so in the previous edition of this, you would have a complaint and you would have to have an investigator and a separate decision maker. And then if anyone appealed it, you have to found, you'd have to find one or more additional decision makers. With this change, now we have decision makers and investigators are one person. And if there's an appeal, obviously we would, you know, have to look for additional individuals. However, this makes it a bit easier on the investigation side. But you are correct in that this, given the changes to it when it comes to different groups of individuals, both personnel and on the student side, it's very much like Connecticut law.
So I guess I have, I have questions, but I'm not going to get into them in terms of like the things you mentioned. So if we were in compliance with Connecticut law and then I believe like the Title IX changes or the federal component that you're referring to, correct me if I'm wrong, that's an, that's under, that's an executive order. It's not actual, like it wasn't passed by Congress, the federal, the federal law that we're complying to. Is that correct?
I know that it went through a whole process, a legal process. And we, according to our attorneys and the State Department of Education, we have to comply with the new requirements at the federal level.
Yeah, I guess my only perspective, which I was, you know, I, we talked about it last meeting as well. It's under, it's an executive order. It's not like official legislation. And like, we have a national election in two weeks where the president will be different, right? Like, so we're going to have a new president. He's not rerunning. So we're going to have a new executive branch. This is an executive order. It just seems premature to me to vote. Like I don't, I don't feel comfortable voting on this knowing that in two weeks, like we're going to have a whole new, a whole new branch that we don't know what's going to happen with this. It's not legislation yet. It's an executive order. So that's where, that's where my head is at with it. It's just if this was, I believe the executive order has not that recent. So I know we made changes to this policy in 2022. So I would have assumed that that, whatever was needed to comply was done then. So I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm not reconciling the rush to do this in consideration that we have this national election in two weeks. So that's just my personal opinion on it. But I didn't know if there was any, anything else that I missed. But it seems like I'm on the same page in terms of the sequencing of it, so.
Any questions or comments?
I got a question. I got a couple, actually. Can you help me understand why this is being expanded beyond the law of Connecticut? And why the change in wording from hostile environment when it's about sexual harassment?
Yeah, I mean, it went through a whole process, not, you know, something that we did here. This was at the federal level and we now have to comply. So we've been given all of the information and Shipman has, has, our attorneys have written this policy to ensure that we're in compliance. Because if we were in compliance, it could lead to litigation in, in our district. So we're going to comply with it because we're required to. And to do that, the board updates the policy to comply with that, the federal final rule changes. You know, that's, you know, beyond our towns, you know, decision making or, or discretion.
But isn't, doesn't, correct me if I'm wrong. The Connecticut law trumped the federal law since we're in municipality?
No, they're just very, they're more similar than they, they were in the past, is what I was saying to Angela, that there's more similarity in that it's more inclusive. The, but now the federal final rule has, is more inclusive. Connecticut was always very inclusive when it came to any type of sexual discrimination or harassment.
The federal law preempts state law. That's a constitutional provision.
And is it required, I'm sorry, is it required to move forward with it today as a second reading or does?
Here's how I look at it. Angela's right in a certain respect. The law may change in two weeks. She may, she, it may very well change in January, it may not. But today, on October 21st, 2024, this is the current state of the federal interpretation of Title IX. We are statutorily bound to adopt it. Whether we necessarily agree with the provision, don't understand what a provision means. I understand all of what, I, I understand those reservations. But today, and, and since this past summer, that's the, that's the law of the land.
August 1st. August 1st.
August 1st, so, and to your point, I know you made earlier about injunctions existing out there. If the day comes where we are now, Farmington has included an injunction, then this regulate, this, this policy would be suspended and subject to that injunction. But as it sits here today, on October 21st, 2024, this is the law of the land. And we are bound, duty-bound frankly, to follow it. So that's, that's how I look at it. I understand reservations, this is a very, very controversial topic in, in, in the country today. And I understand that. But we have a responsibility here to follow the law as we've been advised it to be. So that's how I look at it. And if it changes, it changes. All right.
If I could ask so it goes to be clear, so when there's an executive order, you're supposed to follow it. It doesn't, like whether you agree with it or not?
You can write your congressman, you can file a lawsuit in federal, you can file a lawsuit in federal court tomorrow to challenge it.
Unfortunately, you have to follow the law when, when, when something comes down and there's an executive order, you might not agree with it, but you have to follow it. And like you said, it could change.
And, and there's people out there that are contesting it. So it's, it's not like, you know, people aren't raising that objection in, in a good faith way. It's just, this is, this is just, it's, it's, it's administered, so as a lawyer, you know, I'll just say, there are certain things that we do here that are ministerial and certain things that we do here are discretionary. This aligns in my way of thinking, I'm not giving anybody else advice, but my way of thinking, this is almost a ministerial responsibility. When we're provided policies like these that we make, and this isn't the first time we've had a controversial policy come down the pike in the last 15 years. We have a ministerial responsibility, or maybe personal objection, if you have one, you still have a responsibility. But if you, if you feel like you don't, you still can't do that, that's fine, there's nine of us, that's why there's nine of us here. Right? So again, we will have, I'm sure, further conversation during this school year on this particular subject, you know, depending on how the election turns out. I'm confident of that, right? So, but right now, as of today, our superintendent has asked us to do this because she knows we're not in compliance today. We are not in compliance with the current federal interpretation of Title IX. So we have to fix that. That about right?
I just, I just want to make a, I think we can always be second guessing what might happen, given a political turn or, there are just so many factors, we have to keep our head down and take the advice of the attorney. And we hear, I, I welcome any board member or member of the public to come to our policy committee meetings. If this is a concern of yours or you just feel like you need more information and you want to hear more about it before we bring it to the full board in a board meeting, please, they're open to the public, of course, they're open to board members. And you can kind of just get more context, get, you know, more details. Perhaps that would help, but I think we have to really pay attention to what we're faced with.
Tom Mooney's going to be meeting with us in December to go over a couple of things. So this would be an opportunity to have some clarification with him on, on how that all works. So, all right.
Just one question, just one question. And it has to do with not necessarily the, the law itself, but more about how the, the training portion, I know there's a section in the, in the law about training of the personnel for, whether it's going to be the court, you know, the Title IX coordinator or the decision, whatever term you want to use, decision maker or the other term that they use there. And so, you know, real quick, just what is the training that is provided to the district staff around this full law? And then that process of investigation and grievance and all of that?
So all of our administrators are investigators and decision makers. And so they are required a much longer training than everyone else. Everyone in the district gets a one-hour training and our administrators get, I believe it's a three-hour training and then follow-up from Shipman. So we have something coming up in November where Shipman and Goodwin come out. I don't have to do that. I do that because, you know, I want to make sure any questions, you know, this is, there's some new features to this. I always want to give the administrators every opportunity to ask every question. So we've, all of our administrators have done the three-hour training and now we're doing some follow-up. Thank you so much.
Okay. I called the agenda item for just the 4118.1 and 4118.1A, but I also want to include 5145.5 and 5145.5A, prohibitive, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment for students in this motion. So can I get a motion to approve policies 4118.1 and 4118.1A? And 5145.5 and 5141.5A for a second reading?
Motion, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions?
May.
You abstained?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So it's 711. All right, thank you guys. Next item on the agenda, something less controversial, the approval of furniture, new business, furniture fixtures and equipment, big package for the central office project.
Susan, thank you for staying with us. We appreciate you.
Yep.
So, so exciting. We now are at the central office part or phase of construction. Lots going on across the way, walls being taken down and furniture being planned. So Susan is here. Susan, just fabulous job with Kim on the high school FF and E, and now we're on to central office.
That's right, thank you Kathy. I've spent quite a bit of time discussing these pieces of furniture with the staff, particularly Kim and Sam and Kathy and Matt as well. And I'm just here to give you a brief overview of what the furnishings are that were selected. It's, it's a much shorter slideshow than what you had for the high school, I promise. And afterwards, I will give you a rundown on what our PCR and procurement schedule is. And I will finish that off with the budget. And ultimately, the idea is to have a vote tonight to hopefully approve the budget so that we can go ahead with the PCR and go forward with the procurement. So without further ado, this is the overall floor plan. I think a lot of you may be familiar with it. So it's essentially, we're looking at just the offices and your Board of Ed and another conference room. You'll also have essentially a huddle room. There is, in the center here, you see in between the offices up in the left side here, we've got some hoteling stations. And that's so that when you have people who are kind of transitory staff that are coming in maybe part-time or are in only for short periods, they have a place to land. And they will have their own little lockable cabinets so they can like weigh their personal things and everything. But it, it frees it up so that you will have essentially open offices for, available offices for people who are passing through. There's also a table where you can have collaboration and there will be a monitor above that table. You're going to have a break room and a nice big IT office there for, for the computer people. And I will, and I'll just like run through and show you, this is pretty redundant, so I'm not going to spend too much time on some of these slides. But we have a waiting area, we'll have just some waiting chairs, some comfortable waiting chairs. These are actually the same chairs that you have upstairs in your counseling waiting area. An end table that will go with it and of course, a reception desk. The desks, all the furnishings that you're going to see here in terms of the desks are the same ones that you have at the high school already. So you don't have to, you know, it's not, we're not introducing something new. These are the same items and they'll be procured through state contract using the same vendor who provided it here for your high school. So everything will be consistent. So this is the superintendent's office and she will have a very functional desk with plenty of storage. She'll have some meeting space available for her in terms of having small meetings at a table or also some lounge furniture for some more casual types of meetings. This is a typical U-shaped desk, there's only a couple of these in here. We've got one for Dan's office and for the receptionist. The rest of the, the offices are a little bit smaller than that. There will be, some of the offices will have meeting tables in them, some of the larger ones will, and of course, some applicable seating and storage. This is your typical L shape, which most of the, most of the staff will have. One thing that we did encounter is that we did have a little bit of a tight budget here. And so we, I met with Kim and Sam primarily, we walked through, we talked about some of the furnishings that you have that are still pretty new, that you've only procured in the last couple of years, and decided that they were perfectly adequate to reuse, that it's not as if you're introducing like a bunch of old junky furniture. So with that in mind, we made some targeted selections and figured out ways that we could reuse this furniture to be a little bit more fiscally responsible here. This is your hoteling station I was describing. You can see these are little movable cabinets for people's personal items. They'll have power for people to plug in their laptops. We'll have a little bit of a casual area so people can have a place to sit down and just kind of relax and, and you know, have a little more casual type of conversation. And this is the huddle table that you see there that will have the monitor above it. That is going to be a little bit of a higher height, so we'll have some stools, some task tools at that. Of course, a break room furniture is break room furniture, so. Your conference rooms will have movable tables. These also will have four of the tables in the Board of Ed conference room and two of them in the other conference room will have power in them. So if anybody needs to plug in a laptop to charge it or, you know, for any other electronic needs that you might have, you'll have flags in each of these two rooms as well. And, and some credentias as well to kind of store some miscellaneous items and electronics and things. And this is the, the group work room or huddle room where you can do some more intensive work meetings and things like that. And this is the IT space. This is really basic, pretty standard line systems furniture, which will provide the power and other types of support that the IT people are going to need. In the center, they will have a table where they can, that's a little bit taller, that they, where they can do standing height work or, you know, they'll have a couple of stools to go at it as well. And there is some power in one side of the table, at least for them to, in case they need to, you know, do test computers or whatever it is those guys do, you know. Now, for your critical dates, we've already met with the building committee meeting and got approval on the furniture that I've shown you tonight. Tonight, we're hoping to get your approval on this. On October 30th, I will be meeting with the state to go over the PCR and get their permission. And assuming that they give it to us, we will plan to issue purchase orders in late November, early December. As I mentioned, this is going through state contracts, so we don't have to spend a lot of time going through a bid process. We don't have to go through vetting and everything else. It's already been vetted by the state, so we don't have all those extra steps that we normally would have to take with a bid situation. We're talking April of 2025 is when the building substantial completion is expected. And that will be when you have your new furniture going in. In May, we're talking about getting, oh, I'm sorry, and that, and then, excuse me, in May you'll have your new furniture going in. And in June, that's when the existing furniture and the staff will all move into the space. For the budget, this is how it breaks down. Most of these items are coming through, one of the budgets is the furniture and freestanding furniture, dorm, office and lounge furniture. And then there's the flags, which we'll also be procuring through a different budget. This is how it typically breaks down with lounge furniture, seating, desks and tables. We had a very tight budget to work with, 182, 615. We managed to get it in right under the wire, 181, 870 or 970, excuse me. So we have a whole contingency of $645. When you're dealing with state contract, that's not a big deal. If it was a bid, you'd be a little worried, but. So with that, what I'm looking for is permission from you guys to go ahead with this. So I'll open that up to you.
No, just that we've been working very closely with Susan, so all of this has been a collaborative effort.
So when it says eligible costs, can you let everybody know what that means?
Yes, you have a grant refund or reimbursement rather that you get from the state. And the eligible is what, basically what falls under the category, what they will approve to be eligible for reimbursement. Typically, that's your general furnishings and things. This type of things that they normally won't cover are things that don't last very long. Waste baskets and consumables and things like that because they don't want to take out a 20-year bond on something that's not going to be around in 20 years, you know. So that's why we try to keep it, everything is eligible, under the eligible contract because you're going to get the maximum bang for your bucks, so maximum reimbursement. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, open it up, Angela?
Can you just remind me, I don't know if it's for you or someone on the board, where is this budget coming from? So is this part of the FHS building project or is this something separate? Can you just remind me how this fits into all of that, please?
We have two projects. We have the high school project and the central office slash field house project. So there are two different projects that are on two different state grants and they're completely separate.
This was accounted for already in those projects? Like this is already accounted for, this is nothing new?
This, right, this is a ren- of next, is that what you mean?
No, I mean, sorry, these costs were included in those, that project already?
Yes.
Like this is nothing new, like?
No, it's just that.
It's all included already?
Right, to get that reimbursement, we have to go through all these steps of approval. So everything is very procedural with all of this. And if we skip a step, we might not get our 30% reimbursement, which we need.
Yeah, it was quite a few years ago that they came up with that 182 number.
So that's been in play for years and we're now, you're applying what is going against that?
Yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
This is money that's, this is money that's going to be spent, in other words, this money hasn't already been spent?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the FF and E specifications and cost estimate for state project number 052-007BE, Farmington Public School Central Office, Phase 2 of 3 and the amount not to exceed $181,970 to be purchased under state contracts, 24PSX 0116AA and 15PSX 0041.
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, next item on new event, new business is 2024 Policy Updates and Repeals, first reading. Beth, turn us over to you.
So the policy committee met last Thursday on the 17th. We went over each of the policy updates, Kathy giving us details, you know, contextual information and summaries from our attorneys. So except for a few of these recommended changes, there are legislative, state or federal mandates that we're getting in compliance with. And a few others are district updates. And I think Kathy may have prepared a slide ready to, to talk a little bit more detail.
Go to the next slide. So I try, whenever we do this, there's so many policies and it can get really confusing. And we spent a whole hour the other day going through each one. So I tried to put them in buckets. There's the Title IX final rule. It actually has implications for any non-discrimination policy. 504 also for both personnel and students. So you can see all of those are updates to align to the same procedures that are afforded in the Title IX policies because it could have an implication, non-discrimination, it could have an implication for Title IX as well. Then there are state law, new legislative mandates enacted in Connecticut. All of these again are written by Shipman and Goodwin and they are following these various laws that change. So you can see that 3170 changed because now boards of ed can have an unexpended education fund, non-lapsing account. We've never been able to have that unless we worked with our town to have that. We've never requested it before, but it is allowable now. So that's why that policy has been updated. Then there's employment and student transfer, is it student transfer or student teachers? It should say employment and student teachers. And then FMLA, administration of medications, admission to public schools, as you know, that changed. And so the policy is changing now. And then there's attendance truancy and chronic absenteeism that changed. Homeless children and youth, improved completion rate of FAFSA, student discipline, suicide prevention and intervention and the legal responsibilities of the Farmington Board of Ed. And that was just updating to the age of 22. As you know, that changed, so we had to update that. Then there are district level. Through our policy review project, Shipman and Goodwin is working with us and we added some thresholds for certain amounts of, if we're going to go over a certain amount, we go out to bid. If we're going to go under. If we're going to go under that, it's something that administration can do. If it's something like a transportation contract, the board approves. So it has those different levels. And then we're repealing two policies, 3541.7. We don't need this policy because we have the 3541, and we move this policy's regulations over to the transportation policy. So there's really no need for that policy anymore. And then the 411.3, Increasing Educator Diversity Plan, we don't need a policy, a policy's not required. But do we have a plan that we submitted to the state? Yes, we do. So that's the new requirement. So we're following the requirement, but we don't need to have a policy on it, and that plan can change regularly. So we don't want to have a policy, you know, that's kind of fixed. Instead, we have a plan that is very flexible over time. So that's just an overview, but you can see how the buckets are the Title IX final rule, then the state laws because of newly enacted state legislation, district level, policy review project, and then the repeals. And again, that's part of the district project that we're doing for policy review.
This is a lot here, and I don't expect to go through each individual one tonight, but I know that there's a lot, there's going to be a lot of questions. I would just say this is a first reading. Before our second reading, we will get red line changes, right?
No, you have them.
Oh, there they are? I didn't see.
Yeah, you have red lines.
All right. So you'll have an understanding of what the, are they in there?
Yeah.
They are? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see. So, I mean, I'm certainly, Beth, you guys met, you went over all these. Okay. I'm certainly opening up, I'm not, I'll have opportunity to ask questions, but I'm trying to figure out a way to do this in an efficient manner, so we're not here until 1 o'clock in the morning. So I would just remind everyone, this is a first reading. We've only had these policies to really consider for the last couple of days. You'll have a month to consider whether, you know, your feelings on any questions you may have about them before we meet again in November. So with that being said, I open it up to questions. Thanks, Angela.
So that was really helpful to ask me with the buckets. I appreciate that. Could we have that for our reference, that slide? So the first kind of slide, I'm visualizing the first top there, I won't, we don't have to go into that again. My same comments that I just voted on previously apply. But I did have a few, as I was reading through, that I think, just for discussion. So 5112.1A, which is just the kindergarten age of five. I felt like the part A was contradicting to later in there, part G, which I'll just read it out to everyone. I think probably people agree, but I don't want to say that. So if you want to send your child before they're five, it says, send it to the principal no later than May 1st of the school year prior to the start of kindergarten. So basically, there's a deadline of May 1st if you want to go early. But then later on in G, it says, if the request for early admission is received before May 1st, the early admission process will occur no later than June 15th. If the request for early admission is received on or after May 1st, the early admission process will occur as soon as possible. But then, right above that, we said the deadline was May 1st, and there was no, so I don't know if there, if that's just inevitably there will be people after May 1st, but then maybe we should change the top. I don't know, I just felt like they were contradicting, but that's, you know.
It's a Kim question. I think it's intended, and I agree with you, the wording sort of makes it seem like, is there a deadline or not?
Yeah.
But we are going to have children move into the district after May 1st. And we wouldn't want to have to say to those families, you missed the deadline, you don't have an opportunity to request, you know, a waiver or an assessment process. So I think that second date and pathway there is intended for people new to the district who didn't have the opportunity to request that prior to May 1st. Could there be language clarifying for those who were not able to request?
Yeah, that would be my only, just to make it equitable for like, maybe those that didn't know too, you know, like, just so it's not only people who move in, like, I just don't want someone to turn away, get turned away if they didn't know about the deadline. I don't know, it just seems a little ambiguous, but, I mean, I'm not going to die on a sword for it, but, you know, that's just for that one. I have a few other ones that were similar to that, that I just had like a few questions on before I would feel comfortable voting on them. The line transfer item, 3170 Kathy, that you mentioned briefly, can you give examples of what would, like, something that you would transfer into that fund or like, what would that fund be used for?
Yes, I've never had it, but many of my colleagues have. So this is a very interesting new feature of the law, and I think it's because maybe some districts wanted to do it, the town wasn't open to it. I think what I've seen as a best practice myself, and again, we've never had it, we've never done it, so we may never have the opportunity to do it. We'd have to have unexpended funds at the end of the year. But I have seen in a district that they will take any unexpended funds, put it in the non-lapsing account for special education only. You're going to see that we have very volatile special education costs this year. Some years we don't, some years we do. Sometimes we have self-insurance, that's way off where we thought it would be. And sometimes facilities are an issue. So it's one of those things where if I had the opportunity, I'd probably put it in there for those reasons, for our volatile accounts, and mostly in special education is where we see it. But that's an example. And that, to me, makes sense, because then it's not like, so in 2526, say we have a non-lapsing account and say there's $100,000 in it, there are times where I have to do like a hiring freeze or a purchasing freeze, because one of those accounts I mentioned, and they cross many accounts, but one of those themes I mentioned, special education, facility, self-insurance, are very volatile. I have to use the existing budget, and I would have to stop purchasing or stop hiring, which would impact our students. If I had the non-lapsing, I'd have a pool of money that I could then apply to the budget to address maybe a volatile area. Probably $100,000 wouldn't do it, but it's something, and it's, so that's an example of, I don't think I would just do it without talking about it in the financials. I think we would talk about it, because we've never had it before, but it is allowable by law.
So, okay, that helped clarify. So it can be on any line item then, that there is, that you have access, so salaries, facilities?
Yes, it could, yes.
It could go. And then would we see it as a line item at the end that would say, okay, equipment came in, you know, under $100,000, so I'm going to take the $100,000 and put it into the account? Is that something that the board would vote on, or is it, I'm just trying to understand?
Well, you vote on the financials. So if it's in the financials, like you're saying, I've never done this before. I've never had the opportunity to do it, so it'd be a new routine that we would have to say, but you wouldn't see it till the very end of the year. I mean, I could never tell you in February that I'm going to have money left in June. It would probably be in, you know, in May and June where we would talk about this, and we'd say, there's this much money in the following accounts. Those accounts will be unexpended for this amount of money, which we will put in the non-lapsing account. But, you know, you approve the financials every single month, and, you know, we would have maybe, you know, some kind of descriptor in there. I just haven't thought of that through, but it is, I mean, I do think it's a good thing for school districts because of the volatility that we're seeing more and more. Students can move in, we didn't expect three out placements, that could be $1 million, that could be $2 million. It's that significant. So we often are in a situation that is very challenging for us and could be challenging for the town if we had to go to the town in the middle, say, of a fiscal year. We've not ever done that, there's no wood here. But it's always possible, you know, so it's not a bad financial planning type of thing. It's just that I don't have those funds at the end of the year, so this might not ever be utilized here, or very little, you know, I don't know.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Then the last one I just had was policy 3326, which I think you referenced. It's the purchasing of items and the table that's there now, like, under $5,000 purchase, vendor can purchase. Did that exist before, not like in maybe a table format, but was there a threshold before where you could just purchase from vendor? Was it always at that 5,000, or has that denomination changed?
I think it's always been around there, it's just that the town has some thresholds, so we're just aligning ourselves. We always follow the town. It's just being put into policy and codifying it. But we always followed whatever the town had, we always followed what their thresholds were. Matt's shaking his head, thank, I know. Matt does a lot of that, the purchasing part for larger items, so.
So this table is basically mimics the town side, is what you're saying?
Yes, I would say so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any else have any questions? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion. Do you have another slide? No. Do you have a motion on the slide?
So it just says to approve the policy.
Okay, okay. Get a motion to approve the 2024 Policy Updates and Repeals, first reading as set forth in our agenda, item 7B.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Seven, eight, eight to one, okay. I'm sorry, abstentions, I apologize, abstentions? Thank you, Beth. Okay, thank you, eight to one. All right. Item 7C, Review and Consideration of 2324 School District Annual Report.
So this is a report that we provide to the town each year, and you're going to see many things that are very familiar to you. And I always really appreciate the board taking a look at this because it's historic information, and sometimes, you know, we're looking back and saying, this is what we had on the agenda, this is who was on, you know, different committees. So the, it's an overview of the 2324 school year when it comes to our budget, our strategic improvement priorities, awards and accolades, as well as other district-wide information. And once you approve it, we send it to the town for their report.
Well, there's a typographical error, my name is not spelled correctly.
Ah ha, see? This is why I need everyone to look at that.
I think Sylvie's name is Miss, I think it says Sylvia on one of them, I think I saw that too.
Yeah.
Yes, I would check the names of all board members, both past and present, to make sure they're spelled correctly, please.
Yeah, here, yes. And do you want Bill or William?
Well, I don't mind William. It's Becker, so it's Beckett, with a T.
Oh, I see.
My old age. Anybody have any comments or questions about?
Do you keep Seamus's number, name? Was it because it was prior year when Seamus was here through May?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Somewhere I saw it.
Matt's name is there too.
He's in a couple of places. Yeah, he was here.
Well, because it's last year.
Right, right. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the 2324 School District Annual Report with comments and wishes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8, Consideration Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations Report.
So Matt's going to present the financials, so we have three approvals. One for July, then August, then September.
So July and August are fairly, look fairly similar to previous years. There's a lot of variables in play during those months, we're closing out the year, starting a new year, and trying to encumber based on the new fiscal year. September, which you have, might look a little bit different, but not very far off, and that's due to some recoding based on final placements of paras. We began to move some things to and from grant funding as well. We did apply some projected revenue to tuition related to special services, and as I said earlier, special services is one of our biggest drivers. Our bester funds are completely obligated at this point, so you'll see that reflected as well. And October is when we typically see the more accurate picture of trends. Again, those first few months are while we're getting started in the new fiscal year and things are settling out.
Any questions with that? Angela?
So I just want to understand this correctly, so in terms of the transportation costs, which I, the billing of that, which I have interest in in terms of, you know, how it comes in and what we're getting compensated for, I've noticed there's no year-to-date expenses for transportation, assuming they haven't submitted anything, we haven't paid anything for July, August, September. So if I approve these, when those, when those come in, they're technically July, August, September expenses, would they just roll into these, or would I see them in the October, like, the October version would reflect it, and there would be discussion on them then?
November?
Yeah, I would say, you know, July and August should look, we got the invoices.
We did get July and August, and those ones looked, those ones were okay and were approved to pay.
But they're not in here, right?
We didn't get them till late last week, though.
Okay, so you'll see them in the future.
We'll see them in the next, next.
We'll see them in October.
Yes, and we'll see them as, so we've got encumbered funds, we'll see them as expended funds in the October report.
And I would just add, each one of us has interest in the invoice.
So for October, then, once we pay out the July, August, September, that will show in the October, and we can get additional information on those at that point.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Like, we're not writing checks yet for the actual bus runs.
Correct.
And won't be for anytime soon.
Yeah, we want to, we're taking time to review those September invoices.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the July 2024 Financial Statement Report as presented?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I get a motion to approve the August 2024 End-of-Year Financial Statement Report as presented.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. And then lastly, can I get a motion to approve the September 2024 End-of-Year Financial Statement Report as presented?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Next item on the agenda is the report of the board chair. I want to thank all of you for your kind words. Fortunately, I did have a bit of a health scare, which made my ability to attend our first meeting, or impacted my ability to attend our first meeting, so thank you all for your kind words and your support. I also would like, at this moment, to recognize Dan's tune and his family and the passing of his daughter Abby, just kind of give a moment of silence for them. Just, you know, I'm sure we all have our deepest condolences and sympathies for Dan and his family. It was, I can imagine how hard it must have been to come here, take on a new job with all the challenges that he experienced, you know, especially in the first six weeks and to have to go through all that. So he's in all, he's in all of our prayers, for certain, his family's in all of our prayers. I want to thank, again, Matt Ross for all of his work in helping out Dan as he goes through this tough time. The district is forever indebted to you, Matt, for all that you do for us, and that is, that is, that is not an understatement. School year seems to be off to a good start, notwithstanding the bus issues, the building is beautiful, you saw the auditorium today for the first time, it is ridiculous, it is unbelievable. I look forward to having our meeting in November in that, in that space. That being said, I'm going to call for motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
We're adjourned.